... started right at six o'clock at the time, so. Sorry about that.
It's a good thing we like to.
And even with that, I'm still missing some of my stuff. There we go. That's my fault, not yours. So. With that said, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, and I'll read the rules and orders. The hearing shall be presided over by the mayor or mayor pre-tent. After calling the hearing to order, the mayors are requested that parcels of property which are the subject of the zoning proposal be identified and reviewed. Following such identification and reading, the development director's recommendations shall be presented. The mayor and city council should call the director for his recommendations to be made part of the record. Proponents of each proposed zoning decision shall then be allowed a total of ten minutes for presentation of data, evidence, and opinion concerning the zoning decision. If all ten minutes are not used, the proponents remaining in time may be reserved for a vote. Opponents of each proposed zoning decision shall then be allowed a total of ten minutes for presentation of data, evidence, and opinion concerning each zoning decision. The presentation times may not be reduced, but may be extended by majority vote, provided they are expanded equally for proponents and opponents. Anyone wishing to speak must come to the microphone and give their name and address to the city clerk. Do not speak unless you have a microphone and have been recognized. First item on the agenda tonight is PZ 2019-532, 1875 Dyer Circle.
Yes, Mayor, pro-temin counsel, this is a variance to allow new addition to approach into a front yard setback of a single-family lot at 1875 Dyer Circle, the property is an INR one neighborhood residential, a little less than a half acre. And here they're proposing to construct an addition to an existing home. And the variance is from the setback section for contextual front yard setbacks. This lot has a contextual front yard setback requirement of thirty-five and a quarter feet, and they would like to build it twenty-seven and about six tenths of a feet. Uh, the current home is eighteen hundred square feet, um, in all, they're gonna add a thousand square feet, that would take the house up to twenty-eight hundred square feet. Uh, there are, uh, proposal, the proposal includes a front porch addition of six feet. Um, that includes twenty-inch deep stairs that will approach into the front yard, um, that will reduce and encroach into the required setback by seven point seven feet. In addition, there's a front addition, uh, six by twelve foot, six-foot deep addition that will go into the front yard setback by six feet. Um, and then they are also are proposing a rear addition and a new two-car garage, but those don't require any variances. And I'll show you those here graphically in just a second. Um, here's the lot, um, on the corner in Dyer Circle. Um, existing condition, you can see the existing home facing the street. Um, here's the site plan, um, so that red area, first red area is the required contextual front yard setback. On top of that, that's the porch addition. Um, that is the six by twelve foot addition to the front of the house. Uh, so those are the two areas requiring a variance, and then the two additions in the back that are, are just part of the project, but do not require any variances from me this evening. Um, staff does recommend approval of this request, um, with a standard condition that it be built in, built in conformance of what you've received in your packet. There are also elevations in your packet if you, um, didn't get to see those. And that's all I have.
Thank you so much. At this point, there is no one wishing to speak in favor. If you don't mind, just give your name and address to the city clerk.
Good evening, uh, my name is Michael Goji. The address is eighteen seventy-five Dyer Circle. All right. Do you need to repeat that?
No, I got it.
Okay. My wife and I, Cassie, have lived in, in our home for seventeen plus years. Um, long-time residents of Shandley, and we have, it's come time to renovate our home. And, uh, I, I won't repeat everything that, uh, has just been said, but, uh, we just were requesting variance to, of course, bring a, a small portion of the house, uh, six feet into the, uh, the setback. Uh, this will allow us to renovate our home in a way that is aesthetically pleasing and also financially feasible for us. Um, we're able to save quite a bit of money, um, in, during a major renovation as opposed to, uh, dozing the house. Um, so we're gonna save, save a bit of the house. And we have full support of many of our neighbors. Uh, there's a petition that I had here that's also included in the packet. And, uh, so I have.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, I'll add that all of these items will come up again later on the agenda to the development department, at which point if there are questions or comments from council, uh, they would be presented then. The next item on the agenda is PZ 2019-531, twenty-two Kewell Wallis Drive Variance.
Yes, thank you. Uh, this is another variance for a single-family residence. Um, here there are multiple variances for an addition to an existing single-family home. Um, so an INR one neighborhood commercial, this lot's about three tenths of an acre. Um, three variances, the first for the street side yard setback requirement, which is fifteen feet. They're asking to take that down to three point one-six feet. Um, a variance to reduce the contextual front yard setback from fifty-one point six feet to forty-six point four feet. And then a variance to not comply with the building architecture requirements for a building that, um, has frontages on two streets. Existing home is nine hundred ninety-two square feet with about two hundred square foot carport. The proposed renovation includes enclosing that existing carport and then adding a rail on the side to create a two-car garage. Um, the expansion is a total of three hundred twenty square feet. Uh, they're also enhancing the front porch, uh, adding some new columns, changing the roof line, and adding steps. The porch has already approached into the front yard, but adding the steps makes it approach more. Um, so there, that's what the front yard contextual setback variance is for. In all, the street side yard encroachment is about twelve feet, um, and the front yard encroachment is a little over five feet for the front wall of the house, and then nine and a half feet for the steps. Uh, we'll note that you'll see on the next map that the joint property, um, approaches up to the property line. And you can see, here's the property in blue, and you can see at the top, the, the house next to it, um, encroaches pretty much up to the property line. Uh, here's the site plan, um, you can see the proposed home, this is the existing carport in yellow that will be enclosed and then expanded towards the front. And then the new, um, garage to create the two side-by-side garages for the home. Here's a photo showing the home, it's a fairly narrow lot, um, out of a lot of room to expand on either side.
Staff does also recommend approval of this request with a standard condition. Thank you, Mr. Chief. Uh, at this time, there is no one wishing to speak in favor. We add, uh, why don't you give your name and address to the city clerk, and any presentation of aerials should be forwarded towards the audience. And show briefly that, that you made available, and we'll look at it.
And I'll, I'll. Well, my name is Paul Mark, our clerk, the site side at one eighteen six three, the R-Code. I am the design professional hired by the homeowner to prepare this, uh, renovation. Uh, that there, uh, which is seen from you, there is a proposed, uh, rendering of what the addition is going to look like. Uh, we've shown the two-car garage addition. I do understand there's, uh, you know, a question of variance on, uh, having the side of the house look like the rest of the house. Uh, I had some conversation with the homeowner, and we tried to, uh, make it as clean as possible as we could without having to really go overboard, and I think, uh, that was a, a very, uh, heavy decision to make there. But we know, and then the addition gave proof, and that's okay. So that should, uh, against it, closer to follow that, uh, preferring architectural renovation. Um, as far as, um, the encroaching to the step backs. You know, we're definitely, uh, referring, referencing the property that joins the homeowner's house, which is behind it. Uh, that current property, which really we showed very minimal on that survey. Uh, which is here. Okay, see? Uh, the, this particular property here, that is in, that, uh, actually, it's, uh, gonna be the joint property behind, I think it's shown on color. Aerial view. That particular property, not only does it encroach the, uh, building line, it also encroaches past the building line into, well, the easement for the, uh, building line setback. So the, I think the, uh, chimney of that particular property on the house addition does encroach beyond the building line setback. So our current addition would be with a three feet before the building line setback, so we would not even be, uh, encroaching anywhere past or beyond, uh, that current setback. So, uh, let's get that, that is what we're looking to do, I think it's gonna be a, uh, very nice addition to, to the property, and it's also gonna afford the homeowners a, they're going to have a second car garage for two vehicles. Uh, and allowing, um, being able to do this will be allow them to stay the house, now look for another property somewhere else outside the city that would be, you know, a better, uh, location for them. So this would be very helpful for them, uh, as well, and it would also be a, um, allowing this would also be, uh, economic, uh, viable option for them, so. Thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you. There's about seven minutes remaining for anyone else wishing to speak in favor. If you don't want, stop voice. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Moving on, the next item on the agenda, fifty-two sixty Peachtree Road, Dyer and Dyer Volvo, a DCI major modification.
Yes, thank you. Uh, this is a major modification to a DCI that you recently approved for Dyer, Dyer Volvo on Peachtree Boulevard. Um, the site's on Village Commercial, it's a about six point three acres, and this is a request to amend the previous condition related to the screening of mechanical accessory units. Um, the applicant has proposed screening each individual rooftop mechanical unit. Um, and I, I did, uh, wanna point out that I handed out the plan vote to you, so you have those elevations. For some reason, I think they didn't get in the packet, we're gonna add that before Tuesday, wanted to make sure you had a hard copy tonight, uh, so you can see what those look like. Um, the applicant came in and proposed to screen these individually, and in reviewing the condition and reviewing the UDO, the interpretation was that the intent is to require, require continuous wall on the facade, uh, to, uh, to detract from the placement of those facilities on the roof, whereas screening them each individually perhaps may draw more attention to them. Uh, so that was my interpretation, so my recommendation to them was to come back and, um, since that's a condition that you all approved, to get your interpretation and see if you would like to consider alignment to screen them each individually. Uh, here's the aerial map. And the site plan, and then in your, in your packet, you'll see this exhibit, um, that yellow area is the roof, and you can see each of the accessory and the mechanical units on the roof. Um, and the little bracket area walls around them, you can see there are several. Uh, and also in your packet, it's a little hard to see on the screen, uh, but those are the different elevations, and you can see in the red there, that's an example of those individual screen louver systems on the roof and how, uh, you can see that for Peachtree Boulevard. Uh, they did submit the materials, you can see the, uh, kind of beige, uh, metal louver system that they're proposing in the photo, a little bit more detail about how that'll look from a perspective from the street. Uh, DRV did review this, um, since it is a DCI, and they, uh, were okay with the changes and recommended approval. Um, staff does recommend denial, however, if you wish to approve, uh, we do have a suggested list of conditions for you to consider, which will allow to, uh, proceed as proposed. That's it.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Jeanne Gopolcos. I am representing Dyer and Dyer Volvo, personal and corporate, at fifty-two sixty Peachtree, with our headquarters being in Charlotte, North Carolina. Um, just to give a little bit of background on this, um, we do appreciate you hearing this out on this topic again, and I apologize that we are in front of the group again with this project, but hopefully successfully this time. Um, what we have proposed here, unfortunately, is the screening has caught us a little bit off-guard considering the amount of work in areas of the roof that we do not have any plans to do any work on. So we have suggested, um, the screening system that is very standard for a retrofit situation, although I understand that there is some debate as to whether it meets the intent of the design. Um, so we do appreciate, um, your consideration in looking at this option to individually screen the units as opposed to doing a continuous screen. Um, I believe there was an exhibit sent previously shared that shows the amount of structural modification that would be required to the building. Should we have to install a continuous screen that would make it almost infestable, if not very much infestable to new. Um, therefore, we propose an individual screening system that screens up the units from four sides, um, on, on every single unit, as opposed to just screening the fronts of the building. Um, what we do also expect is that the front building modifications, the facade, will assist greatly with screening the units that are closer to the front of the building. Um, so I appreciate again your consideration of the matter, and we'll look forward to any questions.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? No? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
No.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is PZ twenty nineteen five zero eight fifty-four sixty-six, New Peachtree Road, also known as the Manapro DCI.
Yes, Mayor, pro-temin counsel, this is a DCI request for the previous Manapro facility at fifty-four sixty-six New Peachtree Road. Um, in this case, the applicant has requested a DCI to convert an existing building into a mixture of uses, uh, along with twenty-four concurrent variances and eight concurrent waivers. Um, the site's on Village Commercial, it's a little over three point three acres, most people are familiar with the size, the large white, um, previous animal feed, uh, facility across the tracks from where we are tonight. Um, the variances, I'm not gonna go through each of these, there's twenty-four, um, they're in your packet. Um, most of, a lot of them are related to signage, uh, others are related to the building architecture, um, and then, uh, the ones on this page are mostly related to landscape and sidewalk requirement waivers and our variances. Um, there are, we are requesting a variance, uh, related to parking to reduce the minimum number of required spaces from five oh seven to one ninety-three. Um, there is some variances for, um, the building height, as you know, it's a very tall structure as it exists today, so the variance would, um, be to increase that height from sixty feet, which is the ma- maximum required by zoning to allow a hundred and thirty feet. Uh, the waivers are mostly related to driveway, curb cut spacing, landscape, uh, parking lot landscaping, and the perimeter landscaping around the parking areas. The current site's vacant, um, in all, they're proposing to renovate the facility into a food hall, office, entertainment, and restaurant space using existing buildings. Uh, they are adding about three thousand one hundred square feet of new building, which is proposed to be a restaurant in the site plan. They're proposing to construct a rooftop patio, new staircases and elevators to access the taller, uh, portions of the building, which are proposed in the office. And then expanding the parking lot slightly and, uh, striking a hundred and ninety-three parking spaces. They are proposing to install streetscape on New Peachtree Road with, uh, it does not meet our streetscape requirements because of the street trees and lights are behind the sidewalk, and they're not proposing any streetscape on Shandley Dunway Road. This is partially because of the conversations with us, and you all are familiar with the proposed project as part of the rail trail to, uh, do a road die on Shandley Dunway and have it a twelve-foot multi-use trail. So we've recommended, uh, you to consider potentially a fee-in lieu proposal instead, so that they don't end up building it and then we come back and have to make changes for it. And, and that particular segment would be hard to implement piecemeal because pretty much the entire project needs to happen once in order for it to be successful, because there are some late changes. Uh, this is an international village character area in the future land use map, and the proposal is compliant with the comprehensive plan. Here's the aerial showing the existing site, uh, the site plan. They did submit full architectural details with the signage and the mural, um, on, on the exhibits. You can see the, the, the tower being renovated and added onto. And then a lot of the existing photos, um, in here in your packet, uh, the, the photo on the bottom right is the Shandley Dunway street front, and you can see there's quite, um, a slope down to the street. But this, this would, the lane that's closest to their property would be the portion that where the twelve-foot multi-use trail would be located that would connect to the rail trail. Uh, staff does recommend approval, um, with several conditions. Condition two is related to the sidewalk on the Peachtree, I'm assuming exhibit for that one. Condition three is a fee-in lieu, um, and a not-to-exceed hundred twenty-five thousand. We based that number off the cost estimates in the rail trail plan and just divided it by the linear footed, the linear, um, length of their property compared to the entire project, so that's where that not-to-exceed amount came from. Um, here's the, the condition two exhibit, so you can see here the new Peachtree sidewalk in red, that's where, there's an existing tree, they're, they're going in front of that tree. We would really like to work with them to get it behind the tree for, um, to make sure that the sidewalk has adequate spacing from the travel lanes. The DRV did review this, their conditions are underlying and bolded, uh, related to the murals. Um, they did have a condition, recommended a condition for you to consider adding a foot white staircase from the corner of the property down the Shandley Dunway Road. Um, because of that architecture, they thought it would be good to have that additional condition. We did recommend approval of most of the variances and waivers. Uh, the signage variances, we were, did recommend denial for most of those, and these are recommended for denial because there's really no, um, details about the signage in the packet that are really kind of anticipating additional signage needs, and we feel that the ordinance provides them with enough signage, however, I think their case would be decided, but the reason those are denied is because those particular sign drawings were not included in the packet. And then we did recommend denial of the sidewalk production on the New Peachtree Road, because they wanna take it, or, or shut down for ten before, we think there may be ways within variance to meet that requirement. Um, we do recommend, uh, creating a variance for Shandley Dunway Road, only if a fee-in lieu arrangement is established. Uh, also, we're recommending now on, um, the, the, the requirements, which is a new management, and that is it.
Thank you, Matt. Come on. Uh, that's it.
Good evening, Julie Sellers. Here we have the applicant, with me is Jason Winstapp, and Adam Zepplin, with Sign Investment and Property Inter. We also have Alice Kenley, who is a Kenley board here to answer questions later in this evening. Um, we're here tonight seeking your approval to redevelop and transform this industrial site that's been part of Shandley's history since nineteen fifteen. With your support, we can create a vibrant destination for residents and guests while also respecting the history of this area. Um, Matt had some of the photos we've got, um, photos just to remind, I think most people are familiar, it's a pretty iconic, the tower's floating around, and a really exciting opportunity before you. But given the relatively small size of the parcel and the existing conditions, the redevelopment is very exciting and unique. But based on the city's code provision regarding redevelopment, we are seeking multiple variances and waivers. And I just want to be clear that if this was a new development on a vacant parcel, we know better. We wouldn't come asking for so many variances, this is really, um, due to the redevelopment thresholds, and wanting to make sure that we have the approvals in place and the council's blessing, um, prior to going into permitting process and running to any stack. So we're asking for your support to really balance the city's vision, balance the plain language of the code and the interpretation, and also balance the practical realities of taking on a project with a redevelopment of this scale and magnitude. And there are certainly economic considerations that come into play there. So we've appreciated working with the staff and the DRV's support, we've got the staff report and recommendations. We are requesting approval of all of the variances, and we'll address, um, a couple of the conditions that we would like the council to address and make some modifications through our presentation, through our presentation. I'm gonna turn it over to Jason for him to, um, address the project as a whole, and then I'll open up some of the technical changes that will be requested from you.
Jason, you've got about eight minutes.
Okay. Um, good evening. Um, I'll be, I'll be brief on some of this stuff, and what I really wanna do is kinda hit on some of the, uh, variance items.
Name and address to the city clerk.
Uh, name is Jason Winstapp, with Sign Investment Group, fifty-six oh seven Glenridge Drive, and like that. So, uh, big background, I think most of the folks here know, know us and, uh, and know some projects we've done around, around the city. Um, this is the type of project that we like to do, adaptive reuse in-town retail, industrial. Um, we do, uh, a mix of commercial, real estate, but this type of adaptive reuse, um, is, is, is a lot of fun and exciting for us, and we enjoy, enjoy the challenge. Um, in this, this property we selected, uh, mainly to say that we're probably lucky for punishments on difficult construction projects, um, but really, it's, it's sort of obvious, it's, it's iconic, and it can be iconic. Um, it's, it's a hundred and twenty feet tall, um, I think it, uh, honestly gets a little bit overlooked, folks don't really know where it is. Um, it was just sort of surprising that when you're on top of this tower, you can, you have uninterrupted views of the entire city, uh, you're looking down on PK higher than the tower. Um, it's, it's, it's a very unique experience, unique property, um, and we were excited to, to, um, to redevelop it. Um, the vision for it is, uh, is a use of mixtures, um, as it says in the packet, entertainment, restaurant, and office are the primary uses that we are proposing for the project. Um, entertainment means things like, um, uh, more active restaurant uses, you know, you may have banchi, you may have hidden bowling type stuff, it's those sort of light entertainment uses, along with restaurants, um, uh, and associated, um, sort of, uh, bars, bar lights and that kind of stuff. Uh, and then office sort of scattered throughout the property in certain spots, and then up the tower in the middle, uh, there are many, multiple levels of office. Uh, we're putting in elevators, using the silos as elevator shafts, using the silos as, um, restrooms on each floor, um, that become really cool, unique rooms on the interior. Um, and we're adding, um, uh, we're adding the, of course, the elements you see on the side, the glass tower, in order to get stairs up and down, because we need to, need to depress on, uh, on the building. Uh, I just, I just wanna hit on a couple of, uh, of the, um, the variance requests. Um, architecture is of course an important one, uh, this one, you know, that we're trying to curate, we're trying to, uh, continue the, um, sort of character of the building. Um, of course, it's dilapidated and roached now, but in terms of materials, you have concrete on the sideways, the metal on the building, sort of use it, enhance it, uh, and make it new, but, but, um, but continue, continue this, not, continue the, uh, the sort of feel for the project. Um, the roses come from its ask, uh, it was owned by a company called Eschelments, Un Foods, that's really where it started. Uh, they had a product called Red Roses, uh, that was their, their theme brand. Uh, in fact, if you Google it, you'll find all kinds of, uh, retros, t-shirts, and hats that are all Eschelments, Un Foods, and Red Roses. Uh, so like I said, that was, it was, it was a big thing. Um, so the idea is to use that, you know, we have the, the silos painted with the roses, um, the, the patio, the black base of the silos next to the restaurant, you know, we call it, say, the rose garden. You know, just sort of unique things to try and make the, uh, make the project have an identity, um, so you'd like to see, see those things. Um, EOB was very supportive of the architectural treatments and maintained some of the materials which are not part of the UDO, right? So things like metal, uh, and concrete on silos and parts of the building. Uh, there's many parts of the building where we have to rip things off because they have asbestos and things like that, but we didn't replace with similar-looking materials that are of course new and, and, you know, modern. The site, uh, it sort of is what it is, of course, there's a large, the, the building itself is over an acre, right? So it's one-story building, um, almost fifty thousand square feet, uh, forty-five thousand square, square feet at ground level. square, square feet at ground level. Um, and it, it kind of, of course, is where it is. So we're working around the building, uh, with the conditions that we have. The silos, of course, are vertical, the rest of the building is, is only one story. Um, so we park the site as best, as, as much as possible. Uh, it's about three, I believe it's a little more than three and a half, uh, per thousand parking spaces. The, the, the variance request from five hundred and, uh, five hundred and seven down to a hundred and ninety-three, I think the five oh seven is extremely misleading, that would be over fifty thousand square feet of a restaurant space if we use that. We really just try to conform it to Chamlee's parking code. Sort of uses didn't fit, like entertainment uses, a food hall, there's no parking provision for that in Chamlee's code. So everything is just maxed out to restaurant parking, uh, on that five oh seven. So if that parking is not needed, um, which is why we, you know, requested the variance to reuse it. Um, another, another couple of quick things, because I know you keep moving, so Julie can come back and speak to signage. Um, there was another comment about fenestration on the, on this plan view on the left side. You see that upper left side of the building? Uh, it really faces a retain wall, a bridge, um, a tree there. So what we suggested, which you'll see in some variances, is, uh, to, to, to put another rose element on that side of the building, not class, because that's kind of back of the house for some of our practices. It would be sort of a location of the, of the areas. Uh, so that's one of the, one of the variants that was requested or, or commented by the D R B. Um, the staircase connection at the corner, we wanted to just clarify that, the D R B asked if we would move our staircase, uh, from the little property to the corner, uh, thank you, to the corner. Uh, and we've done that, but it's really more kind of right there on the U Beech Street. So it's on the corner, but it's on, comes down with the U Beech Street, just sort of the way the engineering went down. Um, want to make sure we just clarified that so when we come through, it's not necessarily on the corner, but it's right at the corner on the U Beech Street. The, the other, the other thing to talk, to talk about real quick is this sidewalk that is, uh, four feet right here in the section where you see, I mean, the corner down at the bottom right, uh, where it kind of, it does a jog there. What we're getting there is we're going around an existing specim tree, uh, not a little shrub at the base, but the tree, you see that higher is a specim tree. And you see where the side, the existing sidewalk is on our neighbor's property. We're trying to connect to that sidewalk and avoid the critical roots end of the tree. So that's the reason for that jog and why that section is four feet. Um, we tried going around it the other way. What happens is you end up hitting the property line and it doesn't connect to the sidewalk at the street. Um, so that's the reason for that, the four foot sidewalk section right there.
You have a minute left.
Okay, I'll let you re-talk about signage, that's an important one. Thank you.
Yeah, I can wait until my minutes expire or go ahead and ask for maybe a three minute extension. I know you don't have to vote on that.
Sure, if they have a three minute extension, sure. So you got four minutes.
It's not long.
Thank you. All right. Um, the signage plan, so as, um, we have talked to some folks, the, the code does a great job of a lot of things. Signage for a project like this is in one. And so we really wrestled with it. We had a lot of conversations to figure out how can we achieve what we need, but, but make it feel within the code. And, and so what we have done, um, we came back, we have an actual signage exhibit, um, that really just shows just the building signage, which also includes the murals on the silos. D R B did want us to add extra murals. And so what you see on the signage plan, I would classify as project development signage. And then we have proposed some additional conditions that would give us a maximum square foot of additional tenant signage per elevation. Because the, the code just, it doesn't really apply here and we wanted to have some specificity. And so, um, that's what we've tried to achieve. We were also sensitive and understand that when you're talking about murals, especially murals of the size and nature of this, the city's looking for some kind of protection, which doesn't necess, I would argue, that the code enforcement, you've got some mechanisms, but we have, um, proposed a condition that I think would address the city's ability to come in and use self-help. If, for example, Jason and his folks went away and someone bought it and just did something terrible with the murals and the city doesn't want to have to go to court to come out and repaint it, um, especially given the prominent nature, we put that mechanism in place and are certainly willing to agree to that. So we hope that that addresses, um, the concerns that, that I know had been expressed by city council members on other projects as well as this one. Um, again, happy to answer more questions as we go through. I did want to just touch on two additional requests for revisions to the recommendations from staff. Condition number seven is problematic and we're asking you to strike it totality. I can go into more details, but I think what has happened is there was an email, um, this project doesn't satisfy the outstanding agency review criteria. We're happy to talk to Marta, but the way condition number seven is worded is that prior to us being able to get an L D P, Marta would have to approve some vibration criteria. And I think there was just some confusion. So we want to be crystal clear, we're excited about this project, nobody's going to be excited about this project if we're all going to have to sit around and wait on Marta to approve something. The email that Marta sent said that they have some vibration criteria that they would like to provide to the city for the city to provide to us. We're happy to receive that, look at that and, and comply with that, but I'm just really concerned about the condition that says Marta has to approve something. Um, and also just to clarify, we, um, are open to, willing to have easement for the future interpersonal access. Our concern has been, we don't want, if that property redevelops and the easement, um, is actually utilized, we would lose parking spaces. And we want to be very upfront about that and we don't want to create a condition where we would end up having some sort of parking violation or something because we don't have enough parking spaces. And so, um, just to have suggested some language for a condition that would acknowledge we can do the easement and if we lose parking spaces, we don't get penalized for it. We appreciate your support and are very excited about seeing this transformation, um, come to life. So thank you.
All right, that was impressive because that's twelve fifty-nine ninety-seven.
Speak.
Forty-nine is not quite.
Thank you.
A little hands, is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this? Did I, did I see a hand back there?
Nope.
Nope. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to exit the public hearing.
Motion to exit the public hearing.
Second.
End of session. All those in favor? That passes unanimously. We close the public hearing. We're ready to move into order. Johnny announcements presentation this evening?
For you now.
Perfect. Staff, action item three A one A. Perimeter minutes, the council public hearing, more sessions September twelve, twenty nineteen. End of session. Item B, regular means September seventeen, twenty nineteen.
Mayor Proton, I do have one correction that will be made before Tuesday. Um, on the minutes, there was a unanimous, unanimous vote that was made in the error on the minutes. It should have one council member in opposition. Um, it was for the discovered to have items, so that will be corrected before Tuesday.
Thank you. And that would be it.
Got you.
Item B, city manager, authorization to utilize the Renaissance Fund for Mid-City Parking District Study and Implementation.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Uh, at the retreat in Asheville, uh, staff went through our projects list and operational updates for the next several years. Uh, parking in Mid-City District, uh, paid parking in Mid-City District, uh, was an item that was on our list, uh, in, I believe it was twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two. And we were asked to investigate, uh, moving that forward or moving that, uh, forward faster. Um, and so we have found a way that we believe we can do that, and that is to utilize, uh, the Renaissance Fund, uh, for that parking study and potential implementation. Um, and so, uh, the request before you is to authorize staff to move forward, uh, or to authorize, uh, the use of the Renaissance Fund, uh, for the, uh, parking study implementation. And then the, this would then allow us to move forward with an R F P or a request or proposal.
Thank you. End of session. Um, yeah, just want to, this has been, uh, created some conversation, uh, over the course of the past, uh, month or two. Um, you know, a lot of the, uh, one of the issue is, um, the stringer hold put on the existing parking by the residents of the condos, but also, uh, I think probably surprising us all had been the, uh, the construction traffic and the, uh, the, the, the workers, uh, parking around the Mid-City District for the purpose of being able to get to work and working on S L X and, uh, the H R developments. And if that were a short-term, uh, thing, I think it would be easy to kind of weigh it out and come up with some sort of a managed strategy to, to do something. However, um, it seems like construction in downtown Chamlee is going to, um, going to persist for quite some time. And I believe it's necessary for us to have some sort of a, a real meaningful solution. And, um, I'm very interested in, um, the study, uh, to try to find out, uh, if in fact there is, um, uh, a situation that's warrant, uh, putting in possible paid parking. Uh, but I just want to be, um, clear because one of the conversations that had been discussed, uh, amongst council, uh, offline has been, uh, what a on foot or segue or bicycle or other mechanism, uh, police officer, uh, in that area could do. Uh, you know, the acquisition of a managed, uh, paid managed parking facility, uh, is really expensive upfront. And I'm curious, uh, I think there was some discussion about possibly the, um, uh, the skill set versus the, uh, paid, uh, the pay level and, and what have you. And, uh, could you revisit and, uh, remind me of why, um, it is not a, why staff is not recommending that we simply add, uh, for lack of a better term, I don't need to be, um, defining this, but be cop for the Mid-City District that could, amongst other things, in keeping people safe, could actually also advantage, uh, our time parking spaces?
Well, we did have some discussion around that. Um, first and foremost, I believe, um, in terms of a be cop for that area, um, there's, there is a difference, uh, between, uh, someone who's more of a parking attendant versus someone who is an officer. Um, so if you were looking at, um, whether we should or, or could hire an officer, uh, for that area to patrol and look for parking violations, I mean, that is a, that is a possibility. Uh, but again, that would, that would not necessarily be someone who's committed, who's focused on, um, you know, parking violations. Uh, that would be more anything with parking attendant. Some of that, the second piece of that is that, um, the parking study would review our options and would review the need, uh, for, um, quick technology and we might need to assist in some way. Um, if we move forward with, um, an attendant or, or someone to, of course, parking, but without that technology piece, um, you're looking at just a less efficient system, uh, something that, uh, may be a little bit more hittamas, uh, in terms of, uh, the ability to be, uh, to, to observe and be present, uh, for every parking attraction that there might be. That's not to say it wouldn't be, couldn't possibly be effective, um, it's just to say that they would, they would have other duties, uh, as they were in the area.
Thank you, John. I wanted to provide one point of clarification before turning things back over. I also know Jay Eric, who mentioned that the, the council staff was offline. I just wanted to be clear for the record that this body has not met our agreement as a good offline, but there may have been individual conversations.
In, 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 in,
They will also electronically chuck tires or chuck vehicles to, to the specific position, uh, give, um, map location where that vehicle is, um, how long it's been there, you know, if it moved, it would give them electronic, um, one of those, uh, certifications that the vehicles, or certain vehicles that are in violation. That would be a full-time position, um, not, not a certain geographical area of downtown that their parking meters, uh, parking meters or meter maid would be responsible for, that would generate, um, yes.
So I guess that would, uh, just to kind of summarize my questioning, I'm just wondering why, um, does staff necessarily feel that a paid park, if, if that in fact is an option, and that would be, uh, you know, parking enforcement officer with a handheld device that could capture license plates, so that I would imagine that person would just continuously walk the city, uh, for, you know, shooting the, taking images of license plates to capture that data. Is that correct?
There would be, no, there would be more device, uh, both of these, uh, transportation, like they would be able to cover, you know, all of the service.
But they, they, I got you, but they would make their way around in a, in a, in a set pattern in order to be able to capture all those.
That's correct.
That's what they would do like full-time?
That's correct.
Okay, so if that was the.
And the item is to perform a study and come back to the recommendation as to a process product, or is this specifically for a parking?
Uh, this item is to fund a, uh, study and, and furthermore to implement, to identify the source of funding and implement the, uh, whatever comes from the study. Uh, but obviously whatever comes from the study would, would come back.
But to study all options, not just technology, but also personnel and other extractions?
It would be, it would be to study all options, again.
Any other comments?
So my initial reaction when I, um, saw this on the agenda was, wow, this, this seems kind of early, especially with, you know, all this, the list of projects we have going on, uh, in the city, and then as well as future potential, uh, private projects, development, development projects. Uh, I do recognize, uh, the fact that the, uh, some of the projects that are ongoing now, it's time to have, uh, cost and distress in some of the neighborhoods. And I think we should take that as an opportunity to learn from the next few projects that we do, that we maybe restrict some of their parking and how they park and, and other projects. Uh, so back to the point of my initial reaction, so I, I called John Walker up and I said, hey, what's, what's this about? I don't want to put him on the spot, but he, he agreed with me. He thought that this was probably two years too early in, you know, in implementing this type of project. But he, he said that's what he heard from council, so he is bringing it forward. So, uh, I don't know what I agreed to necessarily in, in Asheville. Uh, I don't know that I, I didn't know I was agreeing to that, and, uh, Mr. Mock was not there, so I would, I would, but I think if we move forward, before we move forward with actually paying for a study, I think we need to have stakeholder meetings where, uh, I know a few businesses have been very vocal about, um, uh, doing something, but I also know there are other stakeholders in the city that live on these streets and have businesses that, hey, that put in parking, that probably, uh, on the street, public parking. They probably would not be in favor of, uh, pay, putting in paid parking meters. So I would like a little more outreach to the community to figure out, get a better idea of how this is going to work before we spend money, uh, on any kind of study or anything like that. And also I would like to see how the municipal projects kind of develop and how they play out, because they're going to radically change. I mean, I notice the difference already on how the projects, uh, how the activities change, just even with the temporary signings or the temporary codes. Uh, I think that's going to change, uh, parking behavior, uh, also, uh, in the future.
Thank you, John. Just one second, sorry. I'll just add that I don't know if this is in place when some of those projects were permitted, but we currently have, require a parking, study and parking plans for land development projects?
Construction parking.
Construction parking and ensuring that it's not utilizing public infrastructure places. Now enforcement, but it's obviously a different issue, but applicants coming right through the process do have to prove that they have sufficient off-street parking for the development.
I think, I think we presumably have some room for improvement in the two projects that are currently going.
I would agree.
So.
I'd agree. I'm just sharing with that. That is part of the, uh, the process, you know, how we enforce it is a different story. Um, this is a very, very stoked meeting, very timely meeting, this time of the year is one of my favorite times of the year, so I'm, I'm going to take a break and share a real, real, real quick story.
Before you change the subject, can I comment on the company name?
Yes.
So I, I just wanted to let you, uh, let you in the public know that, uh, we did have one business, um, in the Mid-City District area that did move specifically because of parking. And I think it's really, um, it's really, uh, I totally respect the idea of trying to make sure that we have, um, you know, the most data that we can to make sure that we make the best possible decision, but it would be very, um, I don't know that it would be appropriate to wait, uh, unless there were some real definitive, um, measures, uh, that, uh, that waiting and asking additional questions could possibly, uh, produce. Because the, um, the improvements made to the MARTA parking lot on the south end, uh, were, uh, the restructure made a lot of those to, um, handicap parking. And a lot of those folks, uh, then moved up and have now filled up the parking lots on the north side, which traditionally the businesses, um, across the street utilize. So, um, I think that, um, I think that managing, uh, the parking of the construction workers is a very serious issue, but so is managing the parking behavior with people that live in the condominiums at the, at the cost to the people that are living in the, um, and that are, that are trying to have their, the retail offices be successful. So, you know, if, if you're saying that you're not ready to, to study it at all, I would just agree. If there, if it's possible for us possibly to include certain components to the, uh, to the research, to the new, uh, fund, to talk about the existing tools to kind of replace, and how we could possibly improve those, that might satisfy, uh, all, all people here as it relates to, um, coming up with a great solution, not only for now, but also for any changes that we may, we may need to make in the future.
Thanks.
What are you anticipating the cost of the study? Is it not just a study?
Catherine, do you agree with that?
So we didn't break out the study, that idea was, this would be a whole package, it would be more of an implementation plan, looking at where exactly the multi-space meters go, um, the fact that they're on the streets and how many spaces they would have to use, that is exactly how many spaces there are in the Mid-City District, that kind of thing. And it would be the same compliment even installed in meters and also in each meter, so it would all be a few parts.
So this has been, this is not a study to see if there are alternative ways of, of handling this, this is a study basically to put in parking meters?
Yeah, so we did, the DDA did a feasibility study, a parking study for the downtown Mid-City District last year. Um, and that study showed that, you know, within the next one to three years, that parking meters would be required. Um, so that's considered kind of showing the need for them. We do have some pain points right now, um, which is what's bringing this all up, but we've essentially already done a feasibility study for the DDA now.
Can I clarify, this is not, this is not parking meters where you see a meter in every space?
Right, right, it is, it's the kiosk, the statisticator is what it is basically, but, um, so here's where I'm now.
So much better than the caterer.
Well, I don't know. Here's, here's where I'm now, so the, uh, the first, uh, according to the financial impact, the first year startup for this is a quarter of a million dollars, uh, to put in kiosks that some of us, uh, uh, do not believe that we need. A couple of things, one, I'm certainly against using Renaissance funds for parking studies and parking meters and whatever. Uh, I was the council member that asked for the hundred thousand dollars a year to go into the Renaissance fund. And it was not for this, it was for beautification, it was for murals, it was for arts, it was for, for helping the, the area look better and feel better and be more walkable, it was not for parking meters. That funding, uh, has now dried up, so whatever we have in there, once it's spent, that money's gone. So I'm, I'm against using Renaissance funds for this, number one. Number two, as the only council member that lives in the Mid-City District, I can tell you, and I'm very adamant about it, it's not a parking problem, it's an entitlement problem, and it's a enforcement problem. And as some of the councilmen have just mentioned, the residents, my neighbors, are the ones that are taking up most of the parking spaces that should be utilized for the businesses. Also, as the council member that asked several, several years ago for the signage to go in, for the two hour, four hour limits, the signs to go in, I can tell you that when those signs went up, our parking deck filled up again, because all those empty spaces that were in our parking deck that people have to park in, decided to park in the parking deck all of a sudden, because they didn't want to get a ticket. It's easy to park on the street when it's convenient, if you get to the front door, I get that. When you're parking the deck, you got to walk a little bit further, I get that. But enforcement was very short, and once folks figured out that there was no, nobody going to come by and give them a ticket, then the old habits started back, and the businesses were happy when the signs went up. The residents were mad, I lost a few of those. The residents were mad at me for having them put up, but the businesses were happy because all of a sudden they had parking again. When you put up a sign and you don't enforce it, it don't take long for folks to figure that out. I get it, that you can't chalk tires anymore, that's not legal, thanks Supreme Court. I talked to John today, I believe, and yeah, I'm not going to put you on the spot like that guy did, but, uh, but I believe that if we implement some type of plan to say, hey, even if it's just simple warning citations, I'm not out to charge folks twenty-five dollars for a parking violation, I'm happy with warning tickets. I'm happy with, with going by and telling folks, hey, this is your warning, this is your warning, period. You better find your parking spot in the deck, because our businesses are suffering, because you won't be parking on the street. I believe there's other plans of action that we can take before we spend a quarter of a million dollars installing parking meters, or parking kiosks. And I don't believe those, I don't believe those efforts have been exhausted yet. I, I see on my notes here that I'm looking at, it says that taking pictures may not hold up in court. But I guarantee you, if you go through there and take some pictures and you issue twenty parking tickets, fifteen people are going to pay the ticket without even going to court, and the five people that do go to court, uh, you know, get the, and the judge says, okay, well, it's not enforceable, well, they're still not going to park there again next time, because they have to take the time to go to court, and they know they're wasting their time going to court. So I, I think there's so many other ways that we could look at, I, I agree, our businesses need some help, I understand that, but I think there's other ways of looking at this and, and, and forcing it. And I don't believe it has to be a full-time person, I believe if you have somebody go through once or twice a week for a while, and just go through and take some photos of, of, of tags, issue some warning tickets, whatever, however you guys choose to, to, to implement it. But there does have to be, it can't be, as, as John used the words earlier, hit or miss, it can't be stopped, it can't be no more action. It can be a little hit or miss, it can be Monday this week, Tuesday next, it can be Wednesday, Thursday next. Uh, it can be kind of hit or miss in a, in a, to a certain degree, it can't just be, okay, we've got signs up, we warned everybody, everybody's aware of it, now everybody's parking in the decks again, the spots are empty, okay, now we're going to stop enforcement. It can't be that way. So that's, that's my two cents, I think there's just other ways that we can enforce it before we take the, I think it's a drastic measure to put in parking kiosks, and I, I truly, again, believe that we are just getting way, way ahead of ourselves. I, a few years from now, I think it's going to be something we're going to have to, to, to actually seriously look at, but I, I believe we're a few years to, to, so, and we need to, to manage what we've got instead of spending a quarter million dollars on parking kiosks.
Thank you, Brian. I think that there's been a lot of good discussion tonight, and I imagine you'll get some direction on Tuesday as the path to move forward.
Well, I've got another question before you go on, uh, your line. Yes, I have a question, okay. Since this seems to be an agenda I've wrapped up in the, um, the specificity of using the Renaissance fund or implementing a specific plan, would, would it be okay if direction of staff were to take a different route and possibly to, uh, do some research about, you know, with the conversation given to possibly come back at, you know, another month or so with some different recommendations? Would you, would that be possible?
Absolutely, and if, if that's the direction we'd like to move in, it doesn't have to wait until Tuesday, but I'm happy to, I'm happy to, sure, wait until Tuesday.
I do have a question for Catherine though, on behalf, uh, as it relates to the DDA. Uh, the DDA performed the study, which I think is, it's very responsible that they did that. Uh, what was the outcome, what was there, what is there, what is the DDA's expectation with regard to the outcome of that study? Are they, has the DDA possibly prepared of itself to be the ones that actually implement, uh, the parking, uh, the parking kiosks?
It's been discussed, but not the closest conclusive idea as to what I had.
What's the general, what's the general thought, uh, what is your general opinion about what their, what the DDA's, um, approach toward parking downtown is currently?
Um, I mean, right now, a lot of it, the parking thought is put on hold to get the downtown center built out first. Um, there is possibly the DDA can kind of function as the parking authority if we want to, but I think that's something that we would have to, staff would have to research a little bit more, and go into discussion with the board, and with council members as well, figure out what the city's future in parking management looks like.
So I'll, well, apparently what the DDA's study was in parking authority to determine that there was a need to do the turn of parking after, before parking, and that takes into account, uh, how, how users interact with each other, how it impacts the parking needs, and over time, and then looking at where we need parking and how we need, uh, parking, and how we put it in place to support the downtown corridor. Uh, and there are things that can be done to ensure that complement uses, to make parking available during mop and hoist, and the opposite eventual, et cetera. And so I think some of what I'm hearing from John and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, before we implement a quarter million dollar solution, you're wanting, you're wanting to better understand what that authority is. And I think what I'm hearing from you, Tom, is that there's a problem right now that needs to be addressed in some way or somehow.
I think, I think there's a potential very inexpensive solution to, uh, to kind of echo Brian's, uh, thought. I think that, you know, being able to institute, if it's seen in by staff and the police as reasonable from a management standpoint to implement some sort of a permit, permanent part-time, uh, function of, uh, doing parking enforcement on the existing spaces and revisiting the, uh, the organs as it relates to the construction workers, not, not filling up all of those parking spaces, that would really satisfy my, uh, my desires.
So I think it took the words out of the mouth, I think what I'm hearing here, that we're looking for staff, and I mean, I can give you a chance to agree or disagree, so bear with me. What, what I'm hearing is that we want staff to come back to us with a recommended approach to manage parking, and they may not include meters, uh, but ideally it's looking to have a, a longer-term horizon, and do that in fairly short order, and also ramp up enforcement efforts in the meantime, um, the existing time-related parking. And so if that's the case, I'm going to look around for a, for a nod on that.
And I would also like to include some stakeholder meetings and possibly present the DDA study in these meetings that will allow kind of engagement public on what could be done, and that kind of, so, yes, there are issues to set, and.
So, so with that said, I'm going to ask if we can leave this on the agenda for Tuesday and come back with some specific direction to staff via motion as to what we're looking for them to do, um, with the understanding that it's likely not going to be the immediate implementation of parking meters, but coming back with additional, with additional recommendations, immediate enforcement, as well as staple agreements, and whatever else is going to happen.
On the dot, yeah.
Um, part of the issue, John, if I'm right, is that, as we have discussed, this is the construction, the violations of construction parking. And the lack of a real impetus to not violate. So we have discussed having a code enforcement court, and is that something that can be included in, in this? Or is that something that's going to take a long factor, or maybe it shouldn't be, but it is going to take a long?
This, this really would not fall into the code enforcement category, how, I, I understand what you're asking about the construction. Um, they have identified parking for the contractors. Not all of the contractors utilize that. Um, we have, um, had conversations with them about that, uh, and they are, the, the, uh, developers have been working with us on that. However, um, not every, uh, sub, uh, adheres to what they, they should. And there's also another, uh, violator, or another group there that has a lot more people coming into their business now, and a lot of the traffic's also been driven by that as well. So, um, I won't put, I won't have as much emphasis on the, on the construction activity. Um, I will mention that we will have, uh, those are towards the final stages, so, uh, we will actually see that, um, activity leaving the area not going to look soon, and you will have some public parking spaces opening up in those decks, uh, that they will be providing as well.
Thank you, John. We're going to move on, this will stay on the agenda, and you'll get some more specific direction on Tuesday from this body. Good discussion. So the, this is my, this is my favorite time of year, and it's my favorite time of year here for a few reasons. I think it's actually largely why Eric's missing tonight, but one of the great things about sitting up here is the sun seems to set right there. And there's about twenty to thirty minutes of meeting this time of year where, where he just squirms in the seat, he can't seem to get away from it. So this, this is absolutely my favorite time of year, but for no other reason than, than we get to see him kind of try and play puppets behind the table. So I thought I'd just share that with, those aren't usually with us. Next time on the agenda, the regulation of shareable dockless devices.
You, you should, thank you, Mayor, for, and we have, uh, presenting this tonight, uh, we'd like to introduce Ashley Blue, who is our ICMA fellow, uh, who will be presenting this information.
Um, so per the request of the council and as tasked by the city manager, I've done some research regarding the shareable dockless devices. As you all know, various cities around the metro area, um, have either permitted or prohibited the use of these devices. So I just wanted to provide a brief overview of some of the different regulations, um, that some of the cities who have permitted them have, um, placed in either their ordinances or their interim, um, agreements with some of these companies. So the first one, um, is safety, so one of the things that cities have been considering, um, is the location, um, of where residents can potentially use these devices, whether that be the street or the sidewalk. We're seeing that a lot of cities, um, are only permitting the use, um, in streets. A lot of times they're not allowing them on the sidewalks unless it's like some type of multi-use trail. Um, they're also sometimes prohibiting them to start areas within the city because of traffic concerns. Um, and they're also, um, considering whether or not they want, uh, residents to wear helmets. Um, sometimes they are required, but a lot of times we're seeing that they're optional for, um, residents within these cities. They're also considering time limitations, um, as some of you know, the city of Atlanta had recently prohibited the use of this, um, e-scooters, for example, um, past nine P M, um, the Decatur has also included that in their ordinance, so, um, they're not wanting, you know, residents to ride in them around during, at nighttime. Um, and then also different things like age requirements, uh, speed limits, whether they're allowed to park them, so they're not blocking, um, sidewalks or areas where people, um, need to walk or, um, you know, ride their bikes, et cetera. Um, privacy is another, uh, aspect of a lot of these regulations. Um, cities are doing a good job of ensuring that companies, um, are making sure that the resident's data is secured. Um, sometimes the cities do allow the companies to track the locations of the scooters, but the companies are not allowed to, um, provide any information about the person who's actually riding the scooter. Um, but they do sometimes want to track them just to ensure that they're not in areas where they shouldn't be. Um, they also, running the data sharing, that's also important, um, in terms of residents', uh, financial information, making sure that, um, their information is being shared with their parties. And then another important, uh, aspect of the regulations is the equity piece. Um, some of the cities have ensured that companies provide, um, a non-baking option, because not everybody has a credit card or has access to a credit card, um, or a low-income plan, so that some of their low-income residents have the ability to also use a different form of transit. And then lastly, uh, they provide an educational requirement for a lot of the companies. They want the companies to be responsible for, um, educating users on the different rules and regulations. Um, I feel that's a lot of an accountability piece. Um, I feel that's a lot of an accountability piece, um, in terms of the contracts that they have with these companies. So that's just a brief overview of, um, some of the different types of regulations that are included in some of the ordinances or the interim operating agreements. Um, and the staff report are provided, a list of different options that you guys can review and, um, if you do want to move forward and, um, draft an ordinance or some form of interim operating agreement, we've also prepared, um, a type of decision-making matrix that can, um, that you can fill out and it'll provide the city staff with more information to help us determine, um, what direction we want to help you all move in.
Awesome. Thank you, Ashley. Thank you for taking the time to pull that together. We're really excited to have you join us and see you jumping right into those.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead. Um, so that's a wonderful report. I think you, uh, you uncovered some things about these, um, that I hadn't even thought of, specifically the geo-matching of the person and their identity, but where it is that they're actually going instead of simply just tracking the device themselves. Um, you know, with shambling, I think that the, uh, the motivation for doing this research currently is kind of getting ahead of the curve, uh, with the assumption that there will be more of these devices in the future. Uh, one thing that might be interesting to me is, um, that, you know, with the development of the, uh, the front of the motor station coming up, there might be more of a plaza that might be inviting for there to be, um, places where these can be stored as a way for folks that are writing MARTA to get off those, uh, to get off the train and get on these devices to go places. Um, did, when, in your, in your research, did you do any, um, did you do anything with regard to shambling, like what your thoughts were about what it is that you thought might be good fits for what we're doing, what we might do here at Shambling?
Um, we haven't looked at that yet because we did want to give you all fair opportunity to review everything and then determine whether or not you even think that it is something that's big on Shambling, but we do have the ability to look at different areas around the city to see, um, where we feel that it could be utilized and areas we feel may be too dangerous for people to ride in, so it's always an option, but we didn't want to apply any pressure, so to speak.
We, we do have on the, uh, the MARTA mobility hub plan that we had originally been talking to MARTA about, there is, uh, that was identified, uh, as a document station or an area where they would be drawn to, was identified as part of that along with, with what I left.
So there's a kind of question for both, uh, you, John, and also your chief. Uh, I don't really see these devices in Shambling hardly at all currently. So I wonder if this might, you know, if, if we've got a lot of things coming and I think that council's trying to be proactive about some things and, you know, like our just, our pre, the prior discussion tonight, uh, possibly, uh, this might be something that is down the road. Uh, I wonder if, um, council would need, um, what does that say? I can't read it. Um, I wonder if, uh, staff would be able to offer us guidance as to possibly the timeframe where, uh, this might be more appropriate to implement, uh, possibly than now, or if in fact there are stages that you would recommend that we implement something now that was very light with the idea that possibly when these become more popular here with the development of the town center, et cetera, that there might be other phases, uh, that we, uh, entertain, which is like levels of, of regulation.
I, I think really what, what staff's looking for is a direction from us because as they, as they found their way into state, uh, I think we've been returning them to the providers, we're returning them to other parts of the city, but they're more present than possibly without. And so they're looking to, to this, but how do you come up with some guidance as to whether we allow them and how we allow them if we do, is that, is that a fair statement?
It is. I would say that, um, now is the right time. We are picking them up now. Um, I don't know how many we have currently.
Oh, roughly a dozen.
Yeah, roughly a dozen. So we are picking them up as we see them. Um, mostly they're, they've not been left in very places, so, uh, so there's really no question as to whether they.
So you are ready for a men, a management strategy now?
Yes, I think we're, we're ready to move forward with that. Um, and I would also add that we would not recommend at this point in time that you allow, uh, them on each street rather during construction, during the construction. Uh, however, we do believe that, you know, when that construction is completed, you know, we should have something in place for that.
Now, it's, this is a really, really interesting topic and I'll, I'll share some of that with you, but the, the field of mobility and really now to be able to call them so rapidly, there's already concepts out there as to how do you address, like, for scooters, automated delivery, you know, delivery drones and electric sleds, if that deploy a fleet of wheel delivery drones and do the delivery, you don't have separate space on the sidewalk and they need, um, two inches, I believe, between barriers at SoMushk and Atlanta, like a four feet, three feet, or two feet, and there's twenty or thirty companies doing it. So I think the, the key asset is the, the best practices and the thought and how this operates as a ball and sort of quickly. If you look at the use and the deployment, I want to say that it was the end of 2018 to early 2019, the collaboration of these, uh, multiple, uh, ten times, just in terms of the amount out there and then the number of companies operating them expanded almost as quickly. And so there's, there's certainly a challenge getting ahead of it. So whatever we do, we need to be able to evolve over time and make sure that we're keeping up with it because like any technology, you can't really keep track or be ahead of the curve, so to speak, and you certainly can't implement, um, special lands or anything like that with so many changes coming down the pipeline so quickly. I was just up in Washington DC where these things are one of the places in the primary and historic district and four district, they've actually banned them off the sidewalks and some people riding them in the street. Whereas the rest of town, then they've converted bike lanes or it's now bike or scooter lanes and it's really, really confusing trying to find your way around. But one of the things that they looked at was really pretty cool was when you return these things, you have to actually take a picture of it and send it in and you have to show that it's out of the sidewalk and out of the road and out of the middle line and other lines wouldn't actually find it. It wouldn't let you under ride or either keep your time going until you put it there for initiative praise and it, I don't remember what it was, but once they just won back fifty dollars, which is a significant amount providing a scooter. Uh, it's also very different there than here, but they charge them then versus a distance and it's, it's a really, really cool topic and a lot of things are changing really, really quickly. And so I'll, I'll share those models and thoughts as to how all of this integrates into traditional street with, with y'all between that and Tuesday.
I have one more question. Um, how many, how often, how common was it for the jurisdictions to require a helmet?
Um, not very often.
Right, because of management, management issues?
I'm not sure exactly, um.
Were you in that lineup? Any, any, uh, metropolitan lineup area that you, that you know of?
That you require?
Yeah, I don't know if to jump spot, just if you're a researcher covering.
Um, I, I have to give that to you on that.
Totally good. Thank you. What I was thinking on that is it's more common to have like restrictions where only fellows can ride them because of the dangers, first the helmet, the whole point of them is that they're available in place and so if you don't make that goal, you're not allowed to helmet.
Uh, was, was a one move call test off the table? Was that, was a one move call test, Dr. Stier?
It's not shareable, it's not shareable. So as probably the most active, I'm going to call it e-transportation, so if it catches you, you heard it first, but e-transportational person, I use all of these devices. I use the one wheel, I use the scooter, I use the e-box, I, I know all about all these. I know the challenges of being a user and, and, and I'd say, I, I would highly recommend that whatever we do move it forward is that we do have a speed limit on, uh, these devices. I, I recommend that we do keep them on a multi-use path. You talked about allowing a multi-use path. I think we can easily do that on any sidewalk that's over five feet, we can allow, uh, these devices with bicycles. But it's the speed that's the problem. It's not it's the e-vehicle. I mean, when people blow by you on a bicycle, it's just as dangerous as they blow by you on an electric, uh, vehicle or, so I think the speed is important. I think helmets are important. I know that's probably going to put a challenge for these electric scooter companies, but that's their problem, not mine. Uh, they, uh, and then I, the returning, the, like, there I mentioned, the returning these, uh, keeping them off the streets so people, you know, and having some sort of designation. I think it's important that we, uh, establish the policy now because now we have, some of the scooters we're showing, the showing up here in Shambling now are being driven in Shambling and other jurisdictions and that, and sometimes there's going to be some disconnect, you know, for a kid in a doorbell, but we can, the ones that are dropped off in here, I think we can definitely, uh, regulate more tightly. I think they needed to return, uh, to those locations and then the ones that are driven in from other locations, I mean, I've seen people get off motor trains with, uh, those e-scooters and that type, and so who knows where they come from. If they get picked up and police return them, that's, that's probably, uh, part of policy, but, uh, I, I, you know, the speed, helmets, I think we should always, speed helmets, show the speed limit and we should require helmets and, uh, we would charge, I think, what we do, anything else, those things have to be in the policy.
Brian, what, let's, sorry.
That's okay.
What, what is the city's liability in, in this? If, if somebody gets hurt on one or killed in that, there's been several people killed in Atlanta in the last, uh, six months, is, is, is this fall back on the contractor that owns the scooter or is there, is the city liable for if, if somebody gets hurt on?
So one thing that I did notice when I was going through some of the different ordinances is that some of the cities, well, all of them require the companies to have insurance. Um, but I'm not entirely sure that the cities are responsible. I'm pretty sure that, um, that's what they require the insurance for in case there is some type of incident, um, the companies are liable for that.
I have to put you on the spot, Mr. Brown, but what is your experience and knowledge on that type of situation?
As far as the.
The liability of the city, you know, of allowing the scooters?
Well, I, I believe they agree, but we could possibly ask for a whole harmless agreement, but we probably should speak to children about specifics of, any culpability.
Even, you know, without the agreement, the liability is going to be limited to the same type of liability we would have with any other pedestrian vehicle on the sidewalk. There's a, there's a, you know, uh, an item that, uh, that we're responsible for that we negligently, uh, don't resolve and that would be a liability for us, but we have a really crack, whole works group and we try to stay on top of that.
I have a question for Chief. How, how enforceable is all of this? How enforceable is it to monitor a scooter or, you know, whatever, other?
If I may, if I may just jump in real quick and just say that that's something that we could write into the agreements with the, uh, the groups.
The technology in those scooters can limit the device. They can have, they can have a government throttle to the device in there, so. So once they're being parked here, we could, and we could easily hop on one and if we go over fifteen miles an hour, whatever the miles an hour, uh, designation is, then we tell them they're in violation.
So if I throw that one into an area that it's not supposed to be, it shuts off or?
It doesn't shut off, but, uh, typically you're charged a, uh, fee for that. Um, now, in some cases, I guess they have the, they have the ability to shut it off, but I'm not aware that it actually is, uh, done. But I do know that they, they can charge you.
I, I would think it would be, based on my knowledge, that it could be possible. I mean, I'd be implemented at this time, but, you know, again, that was a control we could put on, you know, replacing scooters, if that's what we desire.
Yes, they do.
Geofencing, I believe, is what it would be.
Yeah, they do have no-ride zones, uh, that they do enforce.
I'd be curious to see if there's indemnification clauses in a lot of those contractors, I think is what you're speaking to, Brian, is could be essentially if something were to happen, would the scooter provide reliable purposes, legal costs in covering those? Um, I think the other thing that's important to look at is which partners have been good partners to other cities and actually stood by the terms of their agreement and which ones happened because just today I was reading an article about Lime and, gosh, I can't remember, and Burger, thank you. And Uber's actually headed to a bunch of them now too, but having agreements for fifty scooters and dropping on one hundred and twenty. So how, how do you manage that and what's your recourse and what are your penalties? Um, so you're looking essentially for consent from council to move forward, drafting some sort of regulation or ordinance towards those or some type of.
Yeah, there, there's three options provided really. It's, uh, do we ban them? Do we, which, there's ordinance to ban them and ordinance to, uh, regulate them or an ordinance to regulate them and, uh, the development of, uh, agreements, uh, I forget what it's called, Ashley, if you could.
An interim operating agreement?
Interim operating, yeah.
Okay, so we'll decide that on Tuesday. Is that on the agenda?
Thank you, Ashley. Good job.
Awesome job. So we are back to the development department, eighteen seventy-five, the higher circle variance. I'm going to start off with a question on that one if that's okay with, with council Matt, as, Matt, your recommended condition was that it's a project substantial conformity with the site plan? And I was wondering how that would impact them if they were to say move that garage a little bit? My concern is primarily that turnaround space. I think it's important that we do that on the front yard context, but as it relates to what they do towards the rear of the, of the house within the building lines, I'm worried that might, um, be a little bit too restrictive if something comes up.
Right, it's substantial conformity, if you could clarify that.
So my question on that was, I believe we stayed in there, there was elevation in the packet when I flipped for a price and I didn't see an elevation, a new elevation.
Do you have that in the packet?
Yeah, they, they should be in your packet. So they, he provided, the applicant provided a picture that shows kind of the typical materials in there, page, I believe packet page thirty-five.
Just waiting for it to drop on the screen, I didn't see it. And then.
Thirty-five. Or is it not? Well, I'm. Yeah, correct thirty-five. Yeah, so, and the applicant might be better to answer this, but it looks like this, this is not the exact house, this is to demonstrate the materials, but then the next sheet, page thirty-six, um, does show the actual elevation of the page thirty-six shown. Um, those were in your packet.
Okay. No, I didn't see it, didn't see it. Okay, that's my question.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks for that one. The agenda, twenty-two fifty-four Wallace Drive variance is the, with the addition of the garage and the side yard in front of it. Thanks for some of that variance.
My other question is for staff, that the, uh, the city's driveway provides for enough space between the structure and the street, put in a sidewalk, should money, uh, plan for that, uh, location in the future?
Yes.
Is there a currently easement there or is it not, not a, sometimes it's not easement?
There's no easements. It looks like there, it, to me it appears there would be an upper between the current edge and the property line in the city right away.
So let me ask the applicant, uh, would there be a possibility of going ahead and granting that easement and so that way it's kind of defined?
Can you come to the microphone to respond? Can you come to the microphone to respond, please?
Sorry. Sorry. Uh, and I may have, uh, misspoke, it, it is more of a right away than it is an easement there, uh, on the side of the property.
Right, right. So I'll, I guess I'll get with staff and figure out, you know, if there's any additional space required.
It's like fifteen feet from the curb to the property line.
Okay, very funny.
Yes, okay.
Right, so. Matt, we just confirm that right away on our side. Very nice of that, for our, the council.
I wonder what their project interferes with the potential future project and then tackle some sort of right-of-way issue because always that's all, they're that enough for them.
Yeah, we would not, we, this project would not be encroaching into the right-of-way because it'll be three feet behind the right, what would be the maximum, uh, extension?
Yeah. Any other questions? Awesome, thanks for that one. On the agenda, T Z twenty nineteen, three nine nine zero, Admiral Fred Waiver, I believe you have a report for.
Oh, yes. Could you pull my presentation? Yeah, again, waivers are not, um, waivers are not public hearings, so there's really no public input, um, in the process unless council has questions.
Then, then you can sit down, we'll, we'll, I'll get if there's any questions. It's not, there's not a public hearing because it's a waiver, not a variance.
So this is, um, this is the application for a waiver or, this is an application for a waiver to allow a second curb cut on, um, a single frontage on Admiral Drive Zone NR1. Uh, you just going to go to the next page. Uh, this is the section of the ordinance, and this is a waiver from chapter three hundred, which is, it's all in regulations, it's not a variance, it's a waiver process, it's a little bit different, and it only requires, um, considering. which is, it's all in regulations, it's not a variance, it's a waiver process, it's a little bit different, and it only requires, um, consideration by council on either here for the law or denial. In this case, the applicant came in and widened the existing driveway and added a parking pad and curb cut in another location in front of the house without a permit. Um, as a result of code enforcement activity, they came in to, um, apply for the permit and at that time, Lord, they were not allowed to have two curb cuts. We'll go to the next slide. This is aerial showing the site on Admiral in the next slide. Um, this shows you the driveway towards the bottom, and if you'll click, John, that'll show you, so you can see here they have a driveway towards the bottom of that lodge and then they've added a four hundred square foot, um, parking pad, which is also considered a curb cut, um, off of Admiral Drive. And the pictures will make it clear about what we're talking about. Um, the two pictures towards the left, I mean, wide driveway, and then the picture on the right, um, see on the picture on the left, a little bit in distance behind that box, is the additional parking pad they provided. Slide, um, council staff does our internal value request, um, however, council elect to approve, there is a standard condition, so I think you have the answer and question.
Thank you, Matt. Are there any questions for staff with the applicant?
I just got one from the applicant. Um, Sam, if you could come up, uh, and were, were you, sorry.
If you don't mind, also before you answer, so ahead and give your name and address to the city clerk for the record.
First of all, thank you all for taking the time. My name is Biny Jenny John. I'm the owner of three nine nine zero Admiral Drive. I've been living in Shandley for nineteen years.
I'm sorry, this is, uh, this is a public hearing, so I think Councilman Hogan's going to ask you a question and maybe you can answer them.
Yeah, so my, my only question was, do you have any letters from your neighbors, uh, in support of having this parking pad?
Well, I asked orally my neighbors and all of them had no disagreements and I did not request any support letter. If you, if you ask me to have any, I can present them by next Tuesday.
So, I, our question I have is for you is, looking at the pictures, it looks like that's a lot of parking for residential. Uh, it looks like you have double wide driveway, probably park, six cars in that driveway and another two or maybe two or four in the intersection. So I'm kind of curious, uh, how many cars and why does this need so much parking?
Good question. Um, my spouse and I are going to get married. His wife died two years ago. We, he has two adult children, age twenty-three and twenty-six. I have one adult child, my daughter, twenty-three, so we're expecting a larger family, that's why we are expanding our driveways. And also across the street, we have, uh, neighbors who have, uh, classmates parking in the street. And Admiral is a thorough street with three schools through, driving through school buses. That's why I feel we need additional parking to help public travel.
Well, thank you, Brian.
So, Matt, I can see in the photograph on the existing condition that there's a, um, a pipe that runs under the driveway, but I can't tell down here on this one, it looks like they, did they take out the curb and there's nothing there, or?
Well, and, and just to be clear, this is not, this stills not been permitted, so the, the, the permit is still under review, so I, I'm not sure exactly, there may need to be some changes, um, to how the curb is constructed, because again, this was done without a permit. Uh, but one of the things we have to have before we can approve the permit is whether or not this, the second path can stay, but we will fully review that driveway expansion and also make sure it complies with code. So they may very well not comply with code at this point, but that will be checked, um, prior to the permit being issued. Does that answer your question?
Sure.
So the scope of the project is the extension of the drive, the existing driveway, from a single driveway to a dual driveway or double driveway and then the addition of a parking path?
That's correct.
And the second curb cut?
That's right.
So if they had, um, if the second curb cut is, is what?
Second curb cut is the need for the waiver.
That's, that's a little.
The permit covers everything.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so they could, it's, it's not really the, um, square footage of the purpose.
That's right.
Problem. It's, it's the widening of one garden, second curb cut. So they could actually have more pavement in their front yard.
Sure, yeah, we get a pull off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And do we know if the, what, of, of structures complies with their ordinance? Have we checked that as well?
Of the driveways?
Yeah.
Yeah, supposedly they do, so I'll have to check that for you.
Thank you. Any other question?
May I add?
May I add a couple of?
I, I apologize, since there's a lot of public hearing on this, I can't let you, but I think you're, you're welcome to approach council members individually after the meeting. I'm sure people will sit around.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next item is T Z twenty nineteen, five thirty-three, fifty-two sixty Peachtree Road, Dyer, Dyer, Aldo Major, CI modification. Any discussion or questions?
So, I, I think I counted them. I might be wrong on my count, but we're looking at seventeen individual louvered screening, uh, structures to hide the air conditioning on top of this building?
Yes, ma'am. Seventeen approximately. There are less than.
Oh, seventeen would be necessary to screen or louver, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
No, no, there were, there's even more behind, uh, the, uh, the facade, I guess.
Including the ones behind the facade, we are proposing to screen all of them.
Oh, okay, okay.
But individually as opposed to.
Yeah, I mean, there is a facade operating, but.
Yeah, that's true.
Just a, you, can I ask a question? Well, they, well, they've got a conversation, go ahead. Um, you had said that there was a hardship behind doing it the way that the city, uh, has done it in other areas. What, what was that hardship that you were stating?
Yes, sir. The, the current building structure, because it's quite old, um, would not support the load that would result from a continuous fence line. So, in order for a continuous fence to be constructed, we would have to post down through the roof every five feet to existing building structure that is currently not stable enough, which would mean that we need to reinforce the building structure along the entire length of what would be an approximately five hundred and fifty foot long fence line.
And there's, there's not a lighter material that you could use to achieve the visual solution without feeling like you're, um, rendering structural harm to the building?
Nothing that looks like a louver system. I mean, there's really not a material or anything out there outside of doing something like a banner system, which would be pretty hideous. Um, we have, we have tried to kind of turn over every stone in terms of what the possibility would be to do a continuous look. Um, we've also tried methods of parquet extension, which poses the exact same problems. The current building structure would not hold a, what would be to be a six to eight foot tall structure in addition to what's already there. Um, so unfortunately, that's kind of what we're facing. It would mean penetrating the roof every five feet along five hundred and fifty linear feet, reinforcing the structure underneath and then resealing, which also poses a leakage issue.
The, the primary concern there is wind shear versus weight, so it's not the weight of the structure, it's the force of the wind. Actually, our name's Frank. Now, what does our code requirement screening, you had mentioned during your initial presentation that this was a condition added by council. What is the codes surrounding screening approved on mechanical units?
It's a requi, it's a requirement. Um, this particular project, uh, that redevelopment threshold, oh, they didn't trigger it, um, by right, so it was the condition that it's required.
Is the requirement that it's a continuous screen or just a baby screen?
It's not clear, but it, it, it mentions, um, it's, it talks about a wall and, and screening from the right away, so that's why I wanted to come to you all to, uh, my interpretation is that that means a continuous screening wall. Um, it's definitely not clear, it's something we want to clarify in our amendment, but wanted you all to weigh in and, and what you thought was most appropriate.
Thank you. And then I'll also have one question, um, for clarity for, for run up here. There's this exhibit of what it looks like and it says option A, B, C, B, E, F, G. Is there a specific option that's being proposed as part of this, or is it just, is it that, is it one of these? What is the actual proposal?
It is all four sides, the horizontal louver system and the color to match the final product of the building, which is like a light gray.
Okay, so it adds shown matching the building paint color?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I just have one more question. Um, was there, you know, there are a lot of, a lot of the dealerships are producing brand new buildings and, uh, you know, Dyer, Dyer is doing a rehab. Was there a conversation at all about, uh, building a new dealership there?
We have actually been trying to do something on this property for the better part of three years and we have exhausted studies of relocation to another one of our properties, which we really don't want to do. We like being here in the city. Um, we have researched the options for demolishing and rebuilding and it's exorbitantly expensive and as a matter of fact, I mean, I can sort of get into the nuances, but for a long time the business was struggling and only in the last maybe eight months, we've had a really tremendous general manager that we moved to the store and he's done great things, which finally just made this investment possible, something that we had been trying to do for the better part of three years. Um, and it's also something that, some of this comes out with manufacturers as well, not always do they man, does the manufacturer mandate that we update the building. Volvo has never mandated, um, it's something that we like to do just because the building is actually, you know, quite hideous and not really appropriate for the streetscape any longer. Um, so we had some, you know, it's multiple different things. Part of it is that we owe it to the business to do something to create a better product and a better environment for our customers now that we're doing a little bit better financially and the building, quite frankly, just needed it in general. I mean, it, we did some minor work on the inside of the building because it had been a disrepair and not a great working environment. We did that about a year and a half ago and we finally have kind of built up the funds to do something of this caliber.
How long, how long do you think that this, uh, that this project will last before it will be obsolete, uh, with regard to the existing structure? Is this a five-year sort of play or is it a ten-year play?
Um, at our standpoint, I think the updated portion of the building, so the showroom, we typically hold a contract that says that we, with, with Volvo, do not have to update the building for five to seven years at the very maximum. So, within the five to seven year mark, we would be back again to do more updates to the building. Um, to kind of give you a frame of reference, if you were to, so a lot of times the way the manufacturers run the projects, right, it can be a, a complete major overhaul of the image, which requires major demolition reconstruction. What Volvo has done with this program is they've taken their, their old design, which has a very specific height and a column grid, and they've created a new image program that is easy to retrofit. And a lot of times what you see in that situation is that when they come around the next time, five to seven years, it's a major overhaul. So right now, you know, every other time they do a major overhaul and every other time in between, they do something that kind of fits into the building structure, which is what they've done here. And that's kind of why if you were to look at the building plans, the extent of work on the front of the building is very minor. It's demolition of the canopy and extend out maybe like eighteen inches just to get a new facade on it and that's it. So I, my expectation would be, like most other manufacturers that we work with, that they went easy on us this time. It's like spend three, three and a half million dollars and then the next time it would be, you know, you have to do something a lot more extensive.
I think that's a great plan because I think it's very fitting with the city here, because I believe in seven years, the surrounding area will be so significantly developed that it'll, you'll have a hard decision that you'll need to make with regard to whether you really do do a showcase, uh, space there or you do something different.
Sure. And I, I would add, I, I've worked with BMW, Mercedes-Benz, Audi, I mean, pretty much Honda, Toyota, the high line, the mid line. Um, and they, they do have a good solid program here. I mean, it's various Starbucks, they're all around like so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Uh, I just want to ask that was actually related to this, this part of the development, but I wondered how, what kind of progress you're making with the streetscape and with DOT and power, power, because you've been doing a lot of work on the front of the building and, you know, I just kind of wonder when the other stuff may.
We actually, um, have, we submitted, as a matter of fact, a couple of months ago to Georgia DOT as well as the county and we've already been through the initial round of review and the first comments and only comments that we got were surrounding with few landscape items. So we have resubmitted to the county with those items addressed and we have resubmitted to Georgia DOT to get it finalized and we expect within weeks, honestly, to have approval on that.
If I, if I recall correctly, uh, as part of the previous approval, they agreed to fund those improvements to be held in the Honda cash bond of the city prior to obtaining the permit, is that, is that correct? Or prior to the prior, you know, if it wasn't done?
Yeah, I think, I can't remember if that was the famous clause or.
Do, do you recall, and what that condition was surrounding the funding?
It was, it was.
It should be in the package.
Yeah, the condition was to obtain a cash bond of a hundred and ten percent of the worth with an additional forty percent either cash or performance bond. Um, at that time, it was several months ago and we thought that the building permit would cut loose so much faster than the DOT and the county permit, that we would be forced to put closer on to get the project moving. But at this point, we've gotten so far ahead with that, uh, I mean, we would be doing the work concurrently with the building renovation at this point.
That's awesome. So, so that's covered either way. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the man of protest CI. Any discussion?
I mean, I'll, I'll jump out there. I'm, uh, yeah, I'm really, I'm really concerned about the, uh, the four foot sidewalk, uh, there. I mean, I, um, I mean, I really don't have, I mean, I, I just wanted to express my frustration for the fact that the sidewalk is going to be, um, unable to be, uh, as wide for that one, that one spot, uh, with the assumption that the, that New Peachtree develops on down the road, uh, you know, people, that's going to be a very uncomfortable little piece to the puzzle. Uh, I do appreciate that you engaged the corner with the stair, the stairwell, staircase down. I do think that people are going to be approaching the site on foot, um, possibly, um, pretty heavily from coming under the bridge, from shambly, um, on Shambly, uh, Dunwoody Road. And so I do, uh, I really do like and want, want your opinion on, uh, what your thoughts are with regard to the, um, suggestion that the DRB made on the, uh, the stairwell down on its side, on its side.
Okay, if I can take them, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I heard two things. One was where the sidewalk mirrors, um, to connect to the existing sidewalk on the far corner of the site. Um, and then the other was the connectivity over on the corner for the Shambly Dunwoody side. Okay. I think, um, let me take the second one first, because I think that's the easier one. We're, we're in agreement to, on the original plan, the connectivity, um, was really going from New Peachtree into the site closer to the drive aisle, closer to the curb cut. And so what we did after DRB and hearing what they requested is we moved a sidewalk, we also expanded it to an eight foot staircase. Our, our request here tonight and just what we were trying to bring to your attention is that the condition was worded as at the corner and, and we wanted to make sure, in my mind, it's at the corner, it, it's at the corner tying into the New Peachtree sidewalk. If there was a situation in which somebody was looking at the permitting, looking at the zoning conditions and said, corner means you've got to come, you know, diagonally at the corner, we just wanted to be clear from an engineering standpoint, this is how they designed it. So I, I do think that we are satisfying what DRB was asking for. They just wanted it closer to the corner. They didn't specify the corner and I think that Taylor can confirm that, I would, I would think, if there's any question about that. As it relates to, um, you know, looking at the sidewalk on the far side of the site, I think that, that shows it there. I've got off my crayons to color the picture, to kind of show the whole, um, thing, but, you know, there's, there's a couple of options here. One is you've got that huge oak and so more often than not, we want to preserve tree canopy and then preserve that. And what the engineer said, um, it is twofold. If we keep the sidewalk going and we jut it up into the site to go around the oak, the amount of land disturbance that we're going to do is going to kill that tree. So we're going to lose that tree. Um, and we're going to have a sidewalk to nowhere. So we're not, we're not going to have the connectivity. What we can do, and the engineers have looked at this, is if you see the, the length of that red strip, um, right, how it's. right, how it spans that far, we could shorten that a little bit so that it, it jogs down a little bit closer to the connectivity and I can tell you, yeah, so the four and a half foot sidewalk, right now, that length is thirty-five feet. And what they could do is reduce that to about a twenty-foot strip.
And then come back out wide relative to equal the other side that's developed.
The, the challenge is, and I've got photos I can hand out, the existing conditions where, where you're.
You know, this sidewalk.
That's existing.
Yeah.
And, and the.
Which one, Jason?
This.
This sidewalk.
It's also, it's a four-foot sidewalk.
Yes.
And it exists today.
So can I ask you about possible, now that your illustration shows, is that the drip line or the, the?
Yeah, the widest part and then it's the little circle that's in the middle, is that the actual?
I believe it's large. Yeah, that's right.
So we get emails all the time from people who aspire to that we have flex A systems and grading kind of systems that is set on top of that. And maybe make flush with the sidewalk and then, and I think still get the same walking path a little bit, but still, I think the sort of tree roots, I've seen a number of those. It's all much an actual, it's a much an actual.
Right.
Is that even an option or D C I is being an option? Was that something you might be willing to work with staff to see if there's an option?
Sure.
I don't know if this is, I want to make sure that'll be answered.
That it's not just a construction process.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, it's, it's a very significant, we can work with it in whatever way we can and it would work. The other thing that we know is there's plenty of asphalt out there, forty-five to the shelf curve into the little streetcase. There's, there's plenty of laying in there since there are many some options for that also. And I would be concerned about that tree health anyway with, like you said, all that construction going in, the hollowing, I mean, it's, it's quite a bit of a critical risk of damage.
Well, I have one next question, is it worth saving?
Right, and that's another thing to consider is.
Is that, is that a little oak?
Um, this is an oak, I'm not sure what's.
Well, and I'm asking for a good reason. But, and kind of, I'm looking at the leaves and I'm thinking that there's a little oak, narrow leaves and it grows so fast. It would, I mean, within a couple of years, it would be that big, but she would have a pretty good size. So if you replace it, you would try to get it away or. In a word, a different kind of growth, then I would say, gosh, it would preserve me, but I think that that is a little oak.
Maybe we can get that identified and, and sorry, because of.
Or.
Because we just have decision making of like whether to bring it out of the road or cut the tree down and start replanting it or, I mean, it's just a, it's a decision. And I appreciate the fact that you expressed an interest in trying to preserve that tree. This, I mean, that's not a, I mean, as far as the development goes, it's not high expense kind of, I'd be fair, it's far easier for you to cut that tree down and plant it. So I certainly appreciate that.
Is, is it a boundary tree or is it your tree?
It's our tree. It's our property.
So, and then the last thing is I, I know this property well. I've done it a couple of times and, and I know the property of that land. I think, I think the, I agree with you, this sidewalk proposed staircase makes sense from a top, top of a practical, yeah. Uh, viewpoint. So there's a lot of things going on over there and, so yeah. And that, it's there so it's visible for people coming in both directions. So I mean, people would be coming across the street. It's tucked away, people aren't either way and people aren't going to know about it.
Right. I, I agree with you, more than a second property in theory, your suggestion would move towards the corner. Which I have your suggestion, yeah, and that's what we get.
I don't want to get too far away from Tom's original question. I think the second part was the other, um, was the, was there a case of sidewalk on Shandley Dunwoodie Road? If you want to address that.
I thought, I thought Tom's question was about that corner. No, I, I think this is a vital piece to kind of get people on to, you know, to engage the site for sure, but I was actually interested in having this also into the bridge.
Oh, second one?
Yeah. I think that a lot of pedestrian traffic is very clearly going to come there. If you don't have that, the stairwell, I think they're just going to mosey up the, up the hill and create, you know.
There's a tank.
I, I think if you, and we've got, I think some, um.
You shared the picture of the corner.
Yeah, let's get back to, just to, to see the full, you know, so what, what the staff has recommended in light of, you know, the rail trail and as it relates to the Shandley Dunwoodie Road is that we would be paying at the end lieu of providing the streetscape. The gray there is so severe that that, that was a, a big conversation of what we talked about with D R B. And you can see on this site plane, because this is the original site plane, see, that's the location of the stair that we originally had. And so in talking this through with D R B and wanting to really draw people from Shandley Dunwoodie, that's where this design came from is, you know, it's really, it is at, it's at the corner. And so if you're on Shandley Dunwoodie, that's your access into the site right there. One of the things that they asked for and Jason and his team have agreed, originally it was a more narrow, I think closer to like a five-foot wide staircase farther down the site. So this is a wider, it's eight feet. So it does provide a nice entry feature into the site to really draw the folks that would be accessing it from Shandley Dunwoodie. I mean, Jason can definitely talk to it. They want to draw people in and they're going to do everything that they can, but given the slope and the site work on that side of the property, that, that was the best option available.
And we, we don't know the condition of, of exactly how the streetscape is going to be laid out on that side of the rail trail.
Exactly.
So that would could change the step. We'd end up having to, you put in steps, then we have to demo the steps and reconfigure the steps and this, living around this location that's not as likely.
The concern I have for the location, the stairs being there though, is for Uber drop off, I think that there's a real risk of us having a very, you know, a significant repeated issues with, you know, Uber and Lyft dropping off there. And I was, you know, kind of curious, I didn't see any kind of, you know, rideshare drop off kind of lanes or something like that functionality at the shop. And I think this is going to be a pretty heavily trafficked area by, you know, rideshare.
So, and I, I think, you know, number one, we, we hope that, that people do use rideshare, do you use other modes of transportation? I think that gets into the operations and I think that kind of similar to some of the other conversations that you all have had here tonight, transportation is rapidly changing. And so I think there's, there's a balance of doing what works from an operational standpoint, you know, if, if, if things start blocking the road, I mean, I live in, in Atlanta, very close to the Beltline, very close to Carr Street Market. There's a lot of rideshare, there's a lot of, you know, issues, but it's not something from an enforcement standpoint, you know, I think designing the site so that you've got the access to get in to the site and get out is key. And that's, you know, why we've got the parking lot and access laid out like it is. Having enough space, you know, to move the curb cut from closer to the intersection part in the back so you've got more healing, less conflict. And I should probably bring out, I'm not an engineer, but, but I think while there's not something specifically called out and designated, that it has been designed to get people in and out of the site effectively, which doesn't leave the rideshare.
And because there's, what Julie's speaking to is there's currently a curb cut line here, um, which would have removed it.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, so, and, and, and this slope here is screaming, this is where it's, it's, it's major here. And then of course, as you go over, over twenty feet right here, and then as you come up here, it becomes less aggressive, you know, so it's scary.
Probably going to stop at the light or the stops, it's the light.
Yeah, it's the light here.
Hopefully they're not doing that, but that's, that is a light.
Ideally, it's set up for rideshare. I mean, people, it's pretty.
I'll start going in here, yeah. That's what I'm, right at the front door, because that's the, that's the.
Front door right here and there. Well, this type like this, do you have the ability to give a specific street address where the Uber or Lyft driver would find a particular entry? Or is it just go the entire, do you, are you registering your sites with the rideshers in terms of like which address is the most appropriate?
Yeah, I don't have the shoulder, I don't think I have that. The, the property has one address, fortunately.
Thank you.
And sometimes there'll be multiple addresses in the property.
Well, I didn't know, I didn't know if this actually had multiple addresses. If it did, I would say register this one over here.
Right.
Get it away from the.
Yeah, well, the address property is new tissue ready, so I think that's helpful. It's not Shandley Dunwoodie.
Any other questions?
Well, I'm. Would rideshare drop off be allowed on the corner?
Well, they do it without.
Well, again, all right, so, so if you, you have a side interest in getting that there's a rideshare and like.
We, we, we.
And if you're successful as I think you are, probably you have a valet, you have some portions too, so you have a valet or a valet or a valet with the, I guess the Uber could be parallel to that. See that number. See that number five or, or like.
This is what I'm thinking about, West West Town, uh, we have a lot of, uh, the U S G in West West Town. Very similar to what we did earlier, we do now earlier, um, and. Actually, one, one way in and two ways, there's an in and out, there's a one, one, two, three, I don't know.
Yeah. And then to matter of fact, if there is an issue, now that there's a, that's the natural, I'm sorry, I was about to ask.
I think that answers my question.
Any other, any others? Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Thank you, darling. Chief, before the call yours, you've got a couple of parking resolutions and a stop and installation in New York. Welcome to go.
Uh, Mr. Mayor of the Council, uh, Mr. Mayor of the County, we have a resolution to approve for, uh, installation of, before we start saying, yes, uh, would any of you agree on it? More concerned, uh, yeah, instead of doing, instead of giving recommendations to, to install, before we start this, probably. There's currently a, uh, uh, two-way stop or stops are presently in that location that's already moving to grow. And the free flowing will, will circle. So, uh, studies done, recommendation for that.
Thank you. And I guess I have some questions. Okay. And we have, um, two parking resolutions, please from the council. Let the chief combine those and talk to us, too, before we look at creating a parking zone.
Uh, first one is a dress lady, uh, park, dress lady, we've parked in a residential, for residential parket at, uh, on the west side of Creston. Um, way between Creston Drive and Herald Circle, um, between the hours, it's a, you know, the, um, received numbers from plant staff when they not assessed the, the allocation and it does create a safety issue for there to be no parking signs in existence. So we're asking for approval for the establishment of no parking signs on the west side, um, that would allow traffic to flow and alleviate the, the unsafe habit of backing out there both sides. Second one is, uh, the no parking on the Jenkins, um, and, uh, they have the intersection of Clevermont. We're asking for approval to install the no parking signs at, uh, at one hundred feet from, yeah, not ready from, one hundred feet from Clevermont and no parking signs on the south side of Jenkins, um, create, uh, the safety issue of vehicles not getting in the city, getting into Clevermont.
So to be clear on the one, the Jenkins, uh, it's one hundred feet from Clark Road and it's, uh, the, there is parking allowed on the side where the townhomes are, but not where the Seago Family Homes are, is that correct?
Yeah, it's called no parking signs on both sides of the Jenkins Drive, one hundred feet from, uh, from Clevermont.
So will, um, how far from the intersection on the side with the townhomes, the northern side of the Jenkins? How far from the stops, from the intersection is there the parking by, by standard law?
But not, I'm not sure by standard law, but, yeah, actually, we're requesting for the D side of, of the townhomes to give us a answer from the first power pole east of Eighteenth.
So you're saying no parking on both sides of the Jenkins, one hundred feet from the intersection? Okay. So you can take a look at that in the screen right now, it's up there. Oh, yeah, okay. Thank you, chief. Any other questions? Last one civilian, accreditation manager position.
Yes, uh, Mayor for the County Council, we're asking for the approval of a resolution to create a new position for the police department for non, uh, for a non sworn civilian, um, as being for the, uh, position of accreditation manager. Uh, previously we had a sworn officer that was due responsibilities of doing, uh, OPS, uh, terror investigation as well as accreditation. Department has been accredited since two thousand and three, um, that, in, in maintaining those documents and maintaining the status and ensuring that the department is being compliant is very tasking, uh, chore. So we are asking that we create a civilian position with the, um, absence of Julian Garcia, who left the department, who was working for many years and did such a great job. So we're asking to fill that position. Uh, we, we initially were going to add another OPS, but with the removal of this particular, um, responsibilities we're going to be able to more efficiently let the OPS handle, uh, the terror affairs investigation that the civilian position had accreditation.
Thank you, chief. Any questions?
I was just, uh, renewed my request to give an order chart for, uh, staff of the police department.
Thank you. Thanks, chief. Nothing for parks and rec, nothing for fines, public works, the Warwick circle and Wood Acres Road, speed cable installation, destroying.
Chief, it's on such a good road, she just asked him, you know, he just referenced a, uh, traffic study that was conducted by staff in the area of Warwick Circle and, uh, Wood Acres Road. The results of that traffic study, uh, revealed that we needed to install speed tables, uh, stop signs and repave the market. Um, staff actually bidded that work out in conjunction with some curving work that needs to be done in that area, um, in response to some concerns that we received from residents regarding flooding after we recently repaved that road, uh, which brought the height of the road up and contricant quantity caused the curbing to be a little bit lower. Um, unfortunately, we only received two bids in response to that, uh, request that we sent out. We believe that the lack of interest was due to larger projects that were going on during that time. We anticipate that we probably would receive a little bit more interest if we rebid the portion of this, uh, project out that involves the curving. So the curving from the two respondents came back about thirty percent higher than, uh, we initially anticipated. So we would like to send that back out to bid, uh, either a little bit closer to the end of the year or at the beginning of the year and move forward with the installation of speed tables. Uh, the speed tables did come back, uh, within our expected cost. The lower, uh, bid, uh, was for above thirty-three thousand dollars, but, uh, the speed tables was included as an alternate bid in conjunction with the curving work. We thought we would get a better value considering mobilization, uh, with combined two projects. So the, uh, other bid goes in the area of forty-six thousand dollars and change. We're requesting it allows to afford with the installation of speed tables, their total base speed tables that will be installed at, uh, Warwick Circle and, uh, Wood Acres, Wood Acres Road, Jenkins, of course, that we have to address.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so you're essentially requesting we reopen the bid process for both of those items and give you approval to afford at a cost not to exceed approximately ninety-five thousand dollars?
Actually, not to exceed forty-six thousand.
So that includes both the curving and the speed tables?
No, so we would like to move forward with the speed tables and rebid the curving workout.
At the same time, and then bring that back to council? Or you're not bringing that to council?
Actually separately, when we just move forward with the speed tables today, uh, just accepting the ultimate bid, forty-six thousand dollars and rebid all of the curving work out either at the end of this year, at the beginning of this year.
So during the petitional process, the, 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 some of the responses to the petitional process, uh, had concerns about speed tables and how it would affect water flow, drainage on, on the property. And that we, that we told that we would do some curb work. Now, is this excluding that curb work on the sensitive yards? There's two sensitive yards that, you know, because I would think we wouldn't want to move ahead with the speed tables if we're not doing the curb work on the few of the.
So I did speak with the, uh, project engineer and he expressed that there will be a space in between the speed tables and the gutter and the curving. So it would allow for drainage. And areas where we are already experiencing drainage issues, uh, we'll just go out and adjust the curving height, existing granite curving, uh, just, I've looked at three or four properties that. And we can go ahead and do that. Uh, we may anticipate that we need this project included for our agenda here. This is monitoring drainage in the areas where the speed tables are installed. Should we have the issue that we couldn't easily.
You know, like the day after we put these speed tables in, we're gonna have, the rain, the, the basements are gonna be flooded and they're gonna, they're gonna rain, uh, you know, the, the speed tables for that, even though they have problems.
Correct. Yeah, that's what we did. The engineer, he's confident that if that would not cause additional flooding. I understand what you're sitting here saying, that the office would be that there wasn't any, uh, issues because we very advise season for it to that. But I believe that we have those issues due to just.
I'd probably as proactive as possible and that to just, you know, uh, and, and, you know, just monitor the location and see if there's, the, there's any way possible those, those speed tables, uh, might contribute to slow life. Because what is the subject of that, that out or blow road, road that might, that maybe not give us, excited of the years.
But it sounds like it might make sense to do the currently, that's something we could do, or is that a, a concern, a time concern? And what's the scope of the curving, the curving, in fact, that's an issue all the way up to eight acres to get to last year?
Yeah, so the scope of the curving is only included Warwick Circle and Wood Acres Road because that's a tax of what a speed table installation would take place. Um, the bids were coming back, the circus money is sixty-five thousand dollars. So, for in place curving, was it a little bit, uh, less than, and we had this discussion to, to very extent when we, uh, had our recent retreat. So we would like to bring that back before the council and, uh, uh, take receipt for direction of what the council would actually like to do between the board of lay curving or resetting the existing granite curving. Um, staff that was important because of the numerous concerns that have been received over the past four months from the residents in that area and the question that we moved forward with was the speed tables, uh, due to, um, some traffic related concerns. And so we felt good to just, uh, go ahead and do that and, uh, address the curving later.
And I, I agree with that, too.
Can we, can we save the curving conversation for me and the mayor's here? I'm sure you'll have an opinion on that one.
I, I, I'm just thinking of the exact.
I probably should just go ahead and decide it now.
All right, well, all right, I was, I was trying to, so I, I believe that in the past, this body has said that new subdivisions or entire subdivisions can be paid with concrete curving, that if there was any sort of infill, that it would be granted. So, um, are you looking at doing the entire walk at this point to make the food, consider some, some of the subdivision? Are you looking at doing, for, you know, that walk?
No, this would be for the entire run for both Warwick Circle and Wood Acres Road. So it would not be.
For the entirety of Wood Acres Road or just the portion?
For the portion where the speed tables are being installed. So, uh, Wood Acres Road, the area in between, obviously, but, uh, excuse me.
Can you think of the name of the possibility that is staying, plastered or?
But only on, only on the downhill side. Cause, cause there's, you know, and then, yeah, yeah.
Or are you referring to, yeah, or, or circle? Correct. So actually for the, I wish I had an illustration, but it's for the, for where you, the circle where you enter into, from plaster and for you exit.
I'm very concerned about this thing I just did. That's why I'm asking you this question.
Well.
But it seems that the, the, the granite curving, I don't think that it's at street, that, that pavement level because of the pavement, it's because it's seen.
Well, it, it is actually a combination of both, but resurface on, on the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's definitely.
Or it's a, or.
Yeah, well, and, and again, I'm, I'm being selfish, but I'm gonna be selfish. The, the project that I just finished is on the uphill side and the curving is flush with the, the pavement. And it would do a lot of disturbing, uh, and, and, and I'm just, if they need to raise, yeah, to look at you.
But there are some.
So, so I'm gonna, as I'm gonna, I'm gonna pause again, because I'm hearing, I'm hearing some consent. The consent that I'm hearing is that we move forward with the speed tables immediately, and then there's consent to move forward, uh, with bidding concrete curving to come back to council on a future date for the entire walk.
Concrete, yeah.
Um, we need four in place, we need four, or something.
Not concrete, granite?
Granite?
I, I, I want to see the bottom.
All right.
Okay, so, if you could, if you could, when you bring, so Speed Home will move forward, if you can bring back. That Speed Home will move forward Tuesday night.
Oh, yeah, Tuesday.
And if when you come forward with the curving, you could bring back some of the costs or options for both granite and the four in place? At which point a decision will be made? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Sorry, is there?
I wanted this to be in favor of, or come forward. It might be seen available.
Okay. That, that we don't need to make a decision on that this evening. So, uh, that can be a conversation for a future date. If you want to have conversations with the council, it's individually determined, so you can get uniform items more going forward if you have a issue later on.
That's right.
Your problem? I was just trying to keep us, keep us moving. We don't need to make a decision on that tonight. So let's, let's make, let's make a decision. Let's make a decision on that move forward. We've got, all right, we've got two second reads on the agenda. Uh, without objection, those will report Tuesday night.
Okay.
Okay. Mayor and council items, Councilman Mesa, Wood Acres Road, traffic coming.
So, related to the discussion, uh, that we just had, uh, I believe our, the, the speed tables that are in this res, uh, resolution, uh, was included in that bid that we just talked about.
Yes, sir.
And the reason why that was is we were trying to get economies of scale and try to get the, you know, as we're just about mobilization done. So we kind of got a little bit ahead. Uh, but this, uh, this is a companion, uh, petitioning process that occurred on the section of Wood Acres between Warwick Circle and plaster. Uh, the concern, the, the concern for those residents there is that once the, the, the Warwick Circle speed tables go in, it'll funnel traffic to this section of Wood Acres. Uh, I don't, they, they failed to get the sixty-five percent. I believe they had, I think around thirty-five home residents. Uh, nine were renters and, uh, they, we've encountered this before, that this was just, it was difficult to get the, uh, property owners, many of them, out of state to respond to your petitioning question. So, you know, previously, we asked staff to send out letters, uh, and informing them, I believe in that case, none of them responded affirmatively or negatively, they just were no response. Uh, I anticipate a similar response in this, similar kinds of, uh, owners, out of state owners. Uh, so the only sensitivity in, in moving this a little bit farther, a little faster, is the fact that it is combined with this bid. If we break it out, we have possibly got localized contractor twice. And then the second thing is that we're gonna create a funnel effect because the Warwick Circle piece will move forward and then the, the, the Wood Acres piece will lie behind. So that's why it's before council as opposed to the end of the.
Are there any curbs in also?
Uh, I don't know if there's any, I'm not sure, I mean, I don't think there's any, I don't, is that quite? Warwick, Warwick has those curves, sort of downhill, and so that's where the water, I think, is coming downhill. And she, I think this, this water is, in most part, it should be downhill. I don't know that hundred percent true, but.
And, and why, um, your report, would you like this to move forward or would you like it to combine with the Warwick Circle on Wood Acres Road, speed table installation, so that if we can, if we can.
Well, we're gonna have to pass the resolution so it can pass forward with the, uh, the bid, it's a reason that, or we're gonna pull that out then.
So is it already in the bid or?
It's already in the bid. Exactly. Let me remember anything that I stated was a little bit.
It, it was bid as an alternate. Um, so yes, we, we do have a price.
So, so that could be included in the Warwick Circle and Wood Acres Road speed table installation motion of, of, uh, Tuesday night?
Well, just, uh, approving those, the installation of those, um, speed tables, you would be including this, uh, by, by adding that.
And we were, the, the, the reason why we need a resolution is because we're creating a taxation for the residents all there.
That's right.
That's what we need to pass.
Your work, say you can't combine?
That's in my opinion, but I'm not.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so this will carry forward Tuesday night?
Correct.
Any objection?
Hang on a second, let's see if I have any question.
I'm, I just need clarification. So you didn't get the sixty-five percent, but you want to put the speed on the same anyway? Is that what, is that what the effort is?
There's sixty-five, there's well over sixty-five. If you would plug all the response, there's only two, nine, 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 uh. Including nine, non-response. And that, that's what, uh, all, who wants, uh, uh, question. And same with that, though, with, uh, all of them. Because, uh, if there's an issue with us having an ordinance and then having someone who does not obtain the tax to come forward instead of we do this in early, they get this in now.
So, the ordinance, the ordinance clearly states that, um, if you don't see sixty-five percent, staff will be bringing it forward. However, the possibility is still to, 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 to.
Any questions, I have only agenda, the per set up, so this is a comment. Hey, just to be your chance to come and tell us whatever you want to say. You've got three minutes. Tell us whatever's on your mind, if there's anything on the ice, on the ice. Uh, none of the charges want to make it out. And it is a model on the, so you cannot, uh, uh, you can tell whatever's on your mind, we can't respond to you.
Oh, I know the model.
And three minutes. Uh, we can't do it, uh, sorry.
Oh, I know.
You can show it back or.
It's slide actually, it's because I'm asking to be prepared and present slides and be, uh, she was doing, so I've been presented slides. But, um. Well, I, um, really am, am applying for the wait room because of four or three reasons. The first reason is that I actually looked up on Shang, Seago Shangwe website, look for permit. I have three, three bits, three contractors all told me no driveway necessary. I have a slide there and in the column said, no, you can check. What I want to say is, if there is a body, uh, a difference, I would like to have a link telling the citizens where to find further instructions for permit. I didn't require, or apply for permit for the second car path because there's no instruction to tell me where to go. I'm an educated person, teach at Georgia State University. If I am looking for permit and no place to tell me, there's something we need to do to improve. That's the first point. The second point is that, uh, Jim, I've been married who really have actual needs. He cannot tell my daughter and sons, he cannot stay with us, you know, you know, I'm a very family oriented person. So that's why we added the car path. The third reason is that, uh, Admiral is a very easy street. You know that, it's a two street at the end of it, Shangwe High, and then you turn and it's Shangwe Middle. The other end you go to, um, Honey Hills. So if we do not have the car path, I will have two more cars parking the street and literally kind of impasse with the morning and even when the, the buses drive through. The fourth reason is actually when you look at the fact that you are not allowing this, uh, two curb carts. Walking around Shangwe, uh, Honey Hills, I saw many two curb carts in our neighborhoods. In, on the street I live in, I found five houses have two curb carts, two car paths, you know, sometimes it's a, a curb parking. The other, the others are just literally two, uh, driveways or car paths. So if actually we found over ten in the neighborhood, two on plantation, one on Elwin, five on, uh, Admiral and many others in our, uh, Honey Hills neighborhood. If all the houses are allowed two curb carts, why not me? Why not three, nine, and zero, especially when we have a, a real family needs? You know, Shangwe is a very family oriented community. We should be encouraged, family coalition, right? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there, is there anyone else that has a sort of comment this evening? Mr. Walker, we have an executive session this evening?
We do not.
Okay. Without, if there's no objection, we will go ahead and close. So, anyway.